The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Wayne Blair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. We have no visitors tonight, so takes us to number seven.
Mr. Flaherty has several status updates, Flaherty?
Mainly just wanted to give you an update on the status of the schools that Stewart's Creek High School, the bid documents have been issued. We have a pre-construction conference at Stewart's Creek Elementary School on June ninth at nine o'clock in the morning. Then the bid openings will be June thirtieth here in the central office. And then we hope to start construction on July fifth. So it could be that we may have to throw a special call in there sometime if it's possible. And Mr. Gill and I discussed this a little bit, so we'll see how things go. And then, of course, the construction duration is twenty-two months to be open by two thousand and thirteen school year. Eagleville, we will have fifty percent drawings on June third, so we can check those at that point. And then on July eighth, we'll have a hundred percent drawings to check. On nineteenth of July, we'll issue the bid documents. We have a pre-bid conference at Eagleville School at ten a.m. on August second. And then we'll have a bid opening on August sixteenth. And of course, the construction start, we'll just have to wait and see how the money comes out on Stewart's Creek High School to see if there's any money left in the budget to do that project with. Also included in the Stewart's Creek High School are alternates for the Laverne and Smyrna stadiums, concession and restroom and seating. So we will also have those pricings. So hopefully, by when we get Eagleville in, we can see if we've got enough money for all of those. And of course, those last will have to come back here along with Eagleville. And those will have to go through the commission subcommittees.
Yeah, that was my question. And Mr. Sandberg's not here, he's got a two-day meeting in Nashville. Do we have to go back through those subcommittees, do you recall? I mean, I know they approved in, certainly in concept, building Eagleville, provided the bids for Eagleville. Stewart's Creek came in and there was enough money left to complete them. I mean, is it your understanding, we gotta go back through every committee and everything?
I think, I think we do just to, so they can evaluate, help us or take a look at evaluating the money. And because it might be that they've never, the only thing they did was approve the design on those stadiums in Eagleville. So we would need to go back and get that approved within that fifty million dollars, the construction of them. They've already approved the high school, though. And that's about all I've got on that.
Questions or discussion?
So in a nutshell, Mr. Gill, what we've, we've gotta go back and they will decide before we have enough money.
I think that's true, although I, I mean, there's a pretty solid understanding that if there's, if we can get, we can get as much done as we can for fifty million, we can get it done. So, you know, up to finishing the whole project, wasn't that your understanding too?
Yes, sir.
So like, say if Stewart's Creek came in at forty and the whole entire Eagleville project came in at seven and a half, and the stadiums came in another million, that'd be under the fifty million. I think it's, they were pretty committed to doing all three.
They are. I think the problem would come in, for instance, if we had enough money to do the stadium, but we didn't have enough money to do Eagleville, or vice versa, or whatever.
Right.
Okay, other discussion? All right, thanks for that update. Number eight.
Rutherford County Schools Tennessee Systemwide Planning Process, TCEP Addendum. And we discussed this on Tuesday night's work session. TCEP is planning a process which replaces the Federal Consolidated Plan, Technology Plan, the Special Education Plan, the Career and Technical Plan, and the Extended Contract Plan. TCEP is also the document that drives our SACSCAS Advanced Ed Certification. This addendum reflects reviews and revisions made during two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year. This revised TCEP document updates the goals and action steps that will be implemented through the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year and includes our first-to-the-top strategies. State of Tennessee's Department of Education is in the process of redesigning the TCEP template and recommends that the district, update the district data in Component Three and revise goals and action steps in Component Five as needed until the new template is released from the state. The TCEP became the Rutherford County Board of Education's five-year plan. When it was originally approved in May of two thousand and six, all revisions are in red ink. And we recommend that you approve Rutherford County's TCEP addendum and authorize the director file any necessary budget revisions and future addenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? So the, the five years have elapsed. Do we have to adopt it as our five-year plan again? I mean, if we did it in May of six.
I think it's just, once we submit this, it's good through fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Again, thanks for all the hard work that goes into that document. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. Nine.
Facilities, Blackman High School softball building. Blackman High School principal, Ms. Gail Vick, has requested permission to construct a softball hitting building on the campus. Building will be a fifty-by-eighty post frame and metal truss roof with metal siding and roof constructed on an existing concrete slab at an approximate cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Funds for the project will come from the Blackman House softball boosters at no cost to the board. Rutherford County Schools Engineering Construction Department has approved the site and will inspect the building as it has been constructed. And we're recommending that you approve the construction of the Blackman House softball building at no cost to the board, as we said the other night. There are no title issues because there's a baseball hitting cage as well.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. B.
Eagleville Sewer Plant Permit. City of Eagleville is currently in the process of filing for grants to help finance the construction of the proposed Eagleville Sewer Plant. Eagleville Mayor, Mr. Sam Toon, has requested a letter from the Rutherford County School Board committing the transfer of the existing state wastewater permit serving Eagleville School to the City of Eagleville to use in the filing for grants. A copy of the proposed letter is included for review and approval. And we recommend that you approve the letter of committal for the transfer of the existing state wastewater, wastewater permit for Eagleville School to the City of Eagleville for the purpose of seeking construction grants.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
This is the permit we got but never used. Is that basically right? That we, we had some, when we're having a future expansion on our own, is that what that permit was?
Do you understand this question?
This is the existing permit that we're using for the wastewater plant that we have at the school now. And we would have no need for it if they put a sewer in. So we would transfer it over to them and they'd hook us up to the city sewer.
Thank you.
Other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. Number ten.
Revised Policies First Reading. I know, how you gonna deal with this?
Um, well, let's just, does anybody have one that they wanna pull out? Let's do it like that and then approve.
I know it's kinda cumbersome, but for tonight, could we take these one at a time?
Um, okay. Mr. Gill, ready? A.
Policy five point one oh two, support personnel. Purpose of the revision is to reflect that all salaries and subsidies paid from sources other than taxes must be paid to the board.
Discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. B.
Policy five point one zero nine, evaluation. Purpose is to change the completion date for teacher evaluations from April the first to May first of each year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. C.
Policy six point three one three, discipline procedures. Purpose of the revision is to add bus conduct infractions to the student discipline code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. D.
Policy six point three zero three, interrogations and searches. Purpose of the revision, to eliminate the requirement that the principal or designated to be present during police interrogation and/or search.
In light of the discussion that we had on Tuesday evening and the recommendations that Board Attorney Jeff Reed shared with us, I'd like to enter a motion that we send this back to committee for further study.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted.
E. Policy four point four zero six, use of internet. Purpose of revision is to eliminate the requirement for maintaining an internet usage log.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. F.
Policy three point five zero zero, purpose of revision, to comply with federal guidelines regarding centralized cafeteria management.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. G.
Policy four point three zero one, purpose of the revision, to act on a new TWSA regulation that allows homeschool students to participate in interscholastic athletics. The regulation is permissive and allows the board to formulate policy permitting or prohibiting participation by homeschool students. Committee's recommendation requires students to be properly enrolled in the school system before they are permitted to participate in athletics.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
As a matter of discussion, I wanna enter that I'm voting my sincere beliefs on this issue this evening. It is, in light of the fact that I am a homeschool parent and, but I truly believe that at this time, with the current conditions, this is the right policy for Rutherford County to, to have in place, that homeschool students not be permitted to participate in these athletic events.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. Number eleven.
Eleven, we have a Career and Technical Education Committee report. And many of the members are sitting out here and have patiently sat through this entire meeting and haven't, I've been watching them at the corner of my eye, they hadn't wiggled or shook or flushed or done anything. You guys, Mr. Jernigan had a good bunch to work with, didn't you? So anyway, we, I think I can say on behalf of all, appreciate your serving on this committee. And also, we got the Honorable Brian Lewis that will present the committee's report.
Thank you Director Gill, Chairman Burns, members of the board. Thank you all for having the foresight at your retreat to look at career and technical education and recognize the importance of it. And by forming this committee, allow us to take a little closer look at some of the things that we are doing and maybe things that we can improve upon. The committee met a couple of times within the last two or three months and looked at the current offerings that we have within our schools, as well as our state report card and what the data shows about how effective our current programs and, and you know, our current infrastructure is. And we were very, I, I was not surprised, but we were, we're very pleased with, with how the programs overall within our school system are functioning and the things that we're doing. But although there are always areas for improvement. And the consensus of the committee coming out, we, we pointed about, or looked at about five different areas that we, we came away with, that you can see on the screen here, that we, we could either improve upon or maybe make some adjustments to. The first one being create a new system-wide CTE position to focus on grant writing, CTE counseling, and promotion of CTE programs. The workload that comes through Ms. Nixon's office is phenomenal. And to many people that work here in the central office, that is no secret. But the, the Perkins legislation and the accountability that comes through from the state and federal levels is tremendous. And with that being said, it is very hard for her to be able to get in situations where she can get out in schools and actually evaluate the programs and see firsthand what is really going on, as well as being able to take the time to write grants, complete various reports, et cetera. With that being said, the committee felt that it would be in the best interest to look at creating an assistant CTE coordinator's position to help with grant writing, promoting CTE programs, getting out and, and in the schools and, and working with students to maybe give them a better focus on career choices down the road, to, to really see what, what is offered and, and what is available after high school. Because we, we have so many students that we, we see in school every day that, that complete four years. And then after graduation, they're scratching their heads and wondering, what do I do with myself? And granted, our, our guidance counselors in all of our high schools do a phenomenal job with working with our students. But when you have two thousand students in a school with five counselors, it is very challenging to sit down with those students one-on-one and really find some career focus or some educational focus beyond high school. So we, we kind of looked at this and felt that there would be some need there for an assistant CTE coordinator's position. Number two on the list there, develop career fairs to heighten student awareness of CTE opportunities, especially for emerging high school students, those that are just coming into high school, I just said. Many students don't realize what options are out there. Of course, they do take the, is it the explore test, as, as well as plan and some other things. But the explore test more or less has very broad categories of, of career areas that are available. So if we were able to get into the schools and, and have career fairs or maybe bring in people from business and industry that can kind of give our students some direction with things that are available, would, would be very beneficial. You can see that we tested this year three thousand forty-three eighth grade, eighth grade students. And they kind of selected those career preferences by their programs. But this, being able to get into schools and have fairs and expose these students to the different course offerings that we have, would, would be beneficial. Number three on the list, identify alternative funding sources to support CTE programs in anticipation of reduction or elimination of Carl Perkins funds. I actually spoke to the acting assistant commissioner today of career and technical education because I wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth, so to speak, about where do we really stand with Perkins funding? And for those of you who are not familiar, we are under the Perkins Four Plan, which provides federal funding to our CTE programs to purchase things such as equipment, that sort of thing, to upgrade our programs and keep them moving forward. And with the current status of the federal budget and the deficits we're running, I, as well as from what I got today from the State Department level, there's no doubt that within four or five years, we will be losing Perkins funding from the federal level because of, of trying to cut and save money. And we anticipate receiving almost five hundred thousand dollars in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget. And as I said, these funds are upgrading, replacing equipment within our programs. And we kind of felt that it would be a good idea if we continue to have the state-of-the-art programs that we have and provide our students with the opportunities that we do, that we begin looking at alternative funding sources in the event that we do lose Perkins. And as I said, it's highly likely that within the next couple years, within five years for sure, that, that money's probably gone. Moving on, item number four there, examine concepts for CTE academies within existing high schools or the creation of a centralized magnet CTE school for courses that may not have support enrollments for all existing schools. There are programs that are out there that we currently don't offer. But those high-skill, high-wage jobs fall in those areas, electronics, engineering, HVAC. A day like today, if you haven't called to get an AC repairman, you should. I, just as a matter of fact, I called yesterday and I've gotta have a six thousand dollar unit put on the house. So, you know, definitely high-wage jobs. But we don't necessarily have the enrollment in all of our high schools to justify putting that program in every high school. So the committee felt that if we looked at creating academies in some schools to offer some of these areas, such as the engineering and HVAC, or possibly some building trades or things that we may have had years ago when there was a huge demand in, in, you know, Riverdale and Oakland when we had just a few high schools. You know, it's, obviously, as I said, it's not feasible to do that in, in every school now. But to look at, you know, centralized programs within certain schools to bring those students in and offer those opportunities to those students. We also had discussed a centralized vocational or career and technical education school. I think you'll find, and I think the committee found as well, that the trend nationwide is we're going away from those centralized career and technical schools. Moving on, number five, commend the existing CTE programs for the successes that we've had throughout our schools. Two thousand and ten state report card revealed the following information. You can see that there was fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four students that were enrolled in CTE in, in oh nine-ten. And with that being said, that, that's about two-thirds of the high school population that's taking CTE courses. You can see as well there, the scores compared to state averages. Rutherford County excelled above those areas. And we're very proud of our CTE graduation rate there, which being ninety-four percent. And I feel without a doubt that students that are enrolled in CTE, we do have some students that had it not been for our CTE programs and the involvement within the career and technical student organizations and that sort of thing, that they probably would not have graduated high school. So we're, we're very proud of our, of our averages of county compared to the state. And we're very proud of, of what our, our CTE programs are doing to prepare our students and, as well as keep them on track and keep them in school. So, is there any questions?
Wayne.
This is a little bit for your time, and Mr. Jernigan may be able to explain better than anyone else. But how does C and T compare with when I was in high school back in the early seventies? I know my brothers were involved in HVAC and, and, and other professions like that, going to, going to contest, I believe, in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and being judged. So what's the difference now compared to, to back in that day?
Personally, I would probably say that a lot of the students that took career and technical education in the sixties and seventies, early eighties, probably were students that came through, they learned enough of a trade in high school that they went out into the workforce and found good jobs. With the changing world economy and the competitiveness of, of our foreign counterparts, we are definitely becoming a very high-skill, high-tech society. And I think we're seeing that within our programs now. We're also beginning to see the, the definite need for some formal training after high school. Not necessarily going to college and getting a four-year degree, but if it's getting a vocational certificate, if it's getting certification through some of our CTE classes within high school, that sort of thing. I think that the demand for more education beyond high school, even in career and technical areas, is, is definitely prevalent now. I think that would be one of the biggest things. And, and as I said, the, the technological advancements and the need for technology in the classroom that we're starting to see in a lot of our areas is, is probably big now.
Tim.
I was just gonna ask, take HVAC as an example. What, what would be offered, how many courses might be offered? How would this committee see that implemented from our viewpoint? Just, just go ahead and take a wish and.
Well, we've, that, that's an area I, we have, we did not delve into really deep yet because we're, we're more or less wanting to get the feelings, I suppose, of, from the board's standpoint, Mr. Odom, is that correct? But we, you know, we did talk about the academy-type concept for some of these areas within, you know, specific high schools or something such as that because we don't really know yet what that enrollment would be until we better gauge student interest across the board in, in those areas.
First of all, comment, Brian had the privilege of knowing you. How long you taught, Brian?
This will, I, I'm finishing my eighth year now.
Yeah, well, about the time I started. Brian's always had this kind of passion for teaching. And his programs have always flourished wherever he's been. He's at Eagleville now, and they've added on to their, their program there. You've done an exceptional job, proud of you for that.
Thank you.
You know, those are the kind of teachers in the CTE program that attract kids into the program. And I don't wanna ever criticize teachers, but there's been some kid, some teachers, and we've gotta do a better drive and train of teachers too, in particular in CTE, to, to spawn an interest on the part of the kids to wanna take their program. You know, we've lost some good programs over the years because dwindling student enrollment. I don't know if y'all touch base with respect to that issue.
We did. We did.
But that's something I think we've gotta do. But if we had teachers in those programs, had your energy and had the, you know, your love for kids, I, I think that would, that too would help, just kind of a comment.
Exactly, Mr. Gill. Career, recruitment, excuse me, recruitment is key with, with career and technical. Unlike our academic areas where students have to be in the course, they have to take it. In CTE, we have to really get out and recruit students. And I, I think that is, I mean, that, that is the key to the success of these programs. As Mr. Gill pointed out, we've had some great programs in some of our schools that we've lost because the teacher did not feel the need to go out and recruit students. And I have a lot of students that come to me because I've recruited them, and they really don't have an in-depth understanding of, of what agricultural, agri-science education is until they get into the program. And they find they like it and they stay. They find some niche in there that, that gets with them and they stay. And I, I, I feel that, you know, all of our, you know, for example, our agricultural programs across the county, we have, we've done a great job with, with recruiting students. And I, I feel that's, that's why we're, we're as viable as we are today. And that needs to be happening in, in all of those areas. Because we have some great programs, but we, we don't always get out there and beat the bushes, so to speak, to get those students in there.
The state has developed, am I correct, pathways where you have to go in certain directions?
Pathways of study, yes.
Has that inhibited the opportunity for some children to participate? Because maybe they wanna do this, but they don't wanna do that. Has that been a problem?
I think it's, it's, it's created a little more rigidity, it is. Because once by sophomore year, a student is usually locked into a pathway. It is, it is very hard for them to, to change. Whereas years ago, we, we had students that had a hodgepodge of, of courses on their transcript. Whereas with, with the pathway system, they're taking three courses in a focused pathway of study. It's all, I, I, I use the term loosely, it's almost like a major. By the time they reach their senior year, they're taking a capstone course if, if they choose to stay the four years. But the, the key thing is they have to complete those, those three courses in that pathway.
That was one of the things Mr. Jernigan was quoting in the paper about some kind of exploratory early on in the eighth grade. Because it is hard for kids in the eighth, ninth grade to really know what they're going to do. It's hard, you know, it's hard for people in their twenties and thirties to know what they're gonna do, much less ask the thirteen or fourteen-year-old. How, how was the best way to address that, you think?
I don't know. I, I don't have the answer to that yet. But you're, you're exactly right, it is very challenging to ask a freshman, what are you gonna do for the rest of your life? You know, that's, that, that system that, that we're currently under by doing that is, is really, I think, limiting. You know, these kids taking the plunge and actually trying something if they know they're locked in. And, you know, as, as you pointed out, some sort of exploratory program is very much a possibility.
Is that something that we could do in county ourselves?
We have it, we have the, the eighth grade rotation. We have the one-on-one. Nine weeks. One-on-one, which is some exploratory. Yeah. It's just keep, keep rolling. It's, it's just hard to, and once they're in, that second year, it's hard to do much about it with respect to changing pathways. about it with respect to changing pathways, isn't it, Don?
And they have to get three years in the same path.
Yeah.
And so, to graduate, that's, if you don't make a really good choice. You can change, we have some that do, you can talk about that because you see it, but we have some kids now that we have the seven periods of day are able to take two paths, literally.
Exactly. We, we have, I have several students that, that are on my pathway in plant systems that are other agricultural teacher, they're also on his pathway as well. So, it's almost like they're getting that double dose, you know, in that area. I have some students that have me, and they're also, because of the, the luxury of having the seven periods, that are, are studying business areas as well. So, you know, we, we are able to do that, whereas on, on the six-period day, it was a little more challenging, you know, to, to be able to adjust those things. But again, I think a lot of it goes back to, we have to start recruiting and, and showing these kids every way we can, the opportunities that are out there.
Your TV people might be interested in saying, what does agriculture mean today? It's not, it's not anything like a lot of people looking on the TV think what's offered. Brian could tell you if you're interested in that, it's very different.
Exactly. I think, I think when we see the, the orientation video that's shown every year at freshman orientation, I know we can't have anything that's in great length, but the video does, does not even begin to scratch the surface of, of our program offerings through CT across the county. It just, you know, it, it has those broad areas, but to an eighth grader, those are, you know, most of them don't have any understanding of what most of those things are.
Aaron.
You mentioned three things that I wanted to make comment on. Number one, recruiting. You talked about the possibility of eighth graders having the exposure and everything. Is there any time period in the academic year that it's particularly challenging for the CTE programs, like when we're doing the TBAS testing or something like that? Do you, does CTE kind of slack off, so we concentrate on that? My, my focus there is that there are off-seasons when the football coaches are down at the junior high taking a look at what's coming, when the band directors are down at the junior high taking a look at, you know, what's coming and trying to entice and bring those students up. Is there anything similar to that, that in a high school CTE teacher would have a specific week of the year that they might be able to run down and, and spend some time with the eighth graders?
I think the best time, this is just personally speaking, that if, if we're going to look at, at doing something like that, probably after Christmas, early, mid-January, before freshman orientation, before registration begins, that sort of thing, to kind of get a feel for what students are out there, the students get a feel for what programs are out there, it's fresh on their mind when they prepare to, to go to registration. You know, we're, we're fortunate at Eagleville since we, we have middle school students in the building, and those students come down to our program, they're in the school, they see what we do all the time. And I understand, you know, our other schools don't necessarily have that luxury. But the, the exposure, you know, at that point in time, early in the year, would be, would be great.
The other thing, or second thing, is you mentioned the academies and the possibility of concentrating programs. With the magnet school concept being in the county now, perhaps transportation issues could be worked out to where more of that could happen, and students could move from place to place where the CTE facilities are and be able to take advantage of that. The last thing is, when you talk about the funding and the Perkins funding potentially going away, is there any way for us to figure, these programs probably have a cost per pupil, you know, and some of them are a lot more expensive per pupil as opposed to others, and yet the enrollment is such that it's very, very valuable? If we know or anticipate over the next four years or so that that funding is going to be in jeopardy, if we could move in a direction of, of having that type of understanding of, of how valuable those programs are and kind of rank them, it could assist us in being able to find, these programs are in jeopardy, if they're important to the business community, then business community need to step up and sponsor those programs. You know, these are the ones that are the most costly to the school system, and yet they're not necessarily, you know, a cost per pupil kind of thing. School system, we can do a great job on these because the cost per pupil is low, and that's what we do great in Rutherford County, cost per pupil. But that might help us to identify which ones we really want the, the business community to step up on.
Exactly. I, I agree, and it's, it's important, I think, to point out as well, and I'm sure most of you may be aware of this, current technical classes vocational education through BEP is funded at a higher level to start with. I think where its supplies and materials, I think, is about $157 per pupil approximately. Then, of course, instructional equipment is, is funded at about $199.75 or $100 per pupil as well. You know, the, the funding from, from BEP is coming down, of course, but it, it's just how it's spent as well, you know, there's, is the other issue there. But business sponsorship, I think, is a great idea. The only thing is, with the current economic situation, how many people would be willing to, to really step forward and, and make that commitment?
Terry.
I'll just make a couple of comments here. First of all, appreciate Mr. Gill letting me serve on this committee. I guess what concerns me, you know, in discussions on this committee is this, the Perkins money this year, I think we were anticipating it being cut. At our last meeting, we talked about going to receive less than what we got before, and as it turned out, we basically got the same amount. But I guess what bothers me, looking down the road here, is some of this money we've got, this Perkins money that's being used on salaries, that should be used on equipment. What, basically what it tells me, when this Perkins money goes away, we're not going to be able to replenish this equipment, for one, and, and what are we going to do with these, these people over here to make the program run? That's just something for the board to think about, I think, down the road here, that the salary part of it, basically putting those in the general purpose.
I don't know the specific breakdown on how much of the Perkins money is used for salary, do you?
Hundred twenty thousand.
Hundred twenty thousand?
That's salaries and benefits.
Out of, out of a half million?
Out of five hundred thousand.
So, basically, two positions?
Three, and then two periods, two months.
Okay.
I guess, I guess what I'm looking at down the road is, is money we're spending on salaries that I think ought to come out of the general purpose versus coming out of the grant money that's intended for equipment stuff. That's just my personal opinion. I think that coming down the road here, if it does go away, we're going, Ms. Nixon's going to have to do a little bit more work, we're going to have to...
It'll be like the air funds that would just be, we'll inherit those, those expenses into GP, but, but I agree in concept what you're saying, it'd be nice to get somewhere else, yeah.
That's like border. Be prepared for it somewhere down the road.
Sure.
And I just, I'll make another comment, that when I was going, I graduated in early seventies, about like Wayne, I guess. Wayne's probably a few years ahead of me, but I had to, I went through all the, the vocational problems, and looking back at it, it, you know, the metal shops, the wood shops, graphic cards and all of that, which, which I managed to use all that through business and everything else, but there was one course I took, I don't even know if they still offer it anymore, Bachelor of Science, Bachelor of Science, I think. You ever heard of that one? Like home ec.
Oh, like home ec.
It's like, it's like, like home ec, but...
Maybe it's super science, it's the same thing, it just changed the name.
It's just for guys, okay?
Wooden bastard weaving.
Wooden bastard weaving.
No, it wasn't bastard weaving, but...
Maybe you'll invite us over to dinner one night. Bring in some cookies next minute.
But I remember, you know, you're looking back at classes you took that benefited you. This was, was cooking, okay, sewing. I believe washing clothes was in there, and I forget what the fourth one was, but I brought, I just let y'all know, I, I know how to sew. This has been in my closet all these years.
Oh, no. Oh, okay. Look at that.
I made it.
Looks like it could be made.
I can't...
I think it needs to be washed there.
I can't wear it anymore, but I, I do. But, you know, I'm a firm believer in...
Come back to hibernation.
I'm a firm believer in these programs, and it, if you sit there and look at the, the listing that we have to offer, it's stuff I had never heard of.
Yeah, it's just changed.
I'm happy that we're putting the emphasis on it, that we have other areas, you know, special ed, Title I, our magnet programs, you know, they've, they've gotten so much media coverage, and, and we've done well in those, but I'm, I'm happy that we're emphasizing career and technical also, because it certainly has a place in our, in our system and our organization for our students to succeed.
I think folks out in our community are really excited about it as well, from, from what I'm hearing from people. Of course, the media coverage has been, you know, covered in the paper about your, your stance and your approach to, to looking at career and technical education. I think a lot of people are excited, because we, we all do know a four-year degree is just not for everyone, and, and that leaves these other students out here with, what, what happens to them? And, and, you know, I think that, that you guys having the foresight to, to address that issue is, is phenomenal.
So, where do we go from here?
Mr. Odom, committee members.
I think one of the things that we spoke about some was trying to showcase, to try to have some traffic, to, to let people know what the options are. So, that's something we're planning to try to do more of next year. One of the people that drove that is our community member here, Tim Holden is here, from the business world, talked about it quite a bit. If you want to hear from him, he's a very good spokesman for it too, because he experienced it and is now employing people and, and doing the same thing. So, for us, in the, in the elementary to high school transition period, a lot of it is awareness and opportunities, and then convincing parents that these are good opportunities, and very often supplement the academic concerns that they have for their, their children as they go through, because it puts a use to the math sometimes. Because if you, if you look at the report card for career and technical education, there's a readings component there, that they, we get a score on in comparison across the state, there's a math there. So, it kind of gives you the use of some of the math things that we do, and helping people connect the dots is really what it's all about. The programs tend to sell themselves once the kids get in it, but you've got to connect the dots for the people before you can get them to try the program or get in it.
So, what sort of board action is necessary? That's what I'm trying to get at. Out of this list of recommendations, what is it that we need to focus on, if anything? I don't, I don't know. That's, if we met, we want to make this more than just a, a good report, which it was, Mr. Lewis, appreciate that. We need some sort of action plan to come out of it, seems to me.
I, I was just going to make one more comment. I, I was just reminded by what you talked about, the manuals and so forth that I, I teach at, a course at MTSU at John, and one of the information that we have is the highest level reading material that we have in our high schools are career technical education manuals. If you don't believe that, check your owner's manual on your car, check the air conditioner manual that you get, and, and it's pretty, it's pretty sobering to recognize that that's exactly what we're looking to do, and so it's, it really does have a, a vital purpose in, in that recognition. I think as we try to sell that, and it's hard, I mean, I was, one of my roles at Oakland before I was principal was to go to the eighth grade schools and, and set up all the things that place and, and set up registrations, and it's so difficult to, for parents to let go the idea that the technical education path is an appropriate path. They, they just, some, some reason or another, don't feel like that that can be appropriate. If we could work that into the conversation and try to let them know that, you know, we recognize it, you know, that, and we've all had that experience, most of us can't hook up the television these days, and we certainly can't read the manual to do it with. But it's important, from my standpoint, to, to me, kind of following up on that very thought process, the more we can do getting our high school kids, the teachers into the eighth grades at some particular point, you mentioned the timeframe is exactly right, you've got to do it before March, and March when you get into those kind of things, but if we can find some way to, to help that process along, I think that could be very valuable, to give all, give some, some time to really, not just spend five minutes, but really be able to showcase it out, and, and, and let people, let the kids know, and maybe get excited, maybe they can go home and get their parents excited, because they go home with an eye, with an eye to your concept. This is something I really like to do.
I was going to suggest that in connection with your question, is that we take, I mean, you gave us several good recommendations on what you'd like to study, you know, the, the experts, so to speak, Kay, Mr. Odom, you know, a few of us could connect down here and look at the recommendations and perhaps come back to the board with a thought or two with respect of how we could, you know, maybe, maybe the, the whys, what we could do and why we can do it and why we can't do some things, but at least come back to you guys within a, a month or so with some recommendations. I mean, I, in particular, I hear a lot of interest on, you know, recruitment, offering, you know, how do we expand the offerings early on so students make the appropriate choices? And, and, you know, we perk their interest with respect to CTE, we got to address that Perkins funding issue, might as well, like Ms. Todd said, be thinking about it now rather than three years from now when the money's gone. So, I would suggest we do that.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea to me. So, you'll report back to us with some thoughts and...
Sure.
Okay. Donald.
Just back up a little bit, kind of reinforce something Terry said about maintenance. You know, we have put a great deal of emphasis on maintenance for years. Perception is so important to, to people. We want our buildings to be maintained because we want people to feel good about going into them. And that's one of the things that we, Terry was addressing there, that maintaining our programs is vital, keeping students involved and feeling good about what they're, what they're working with. The up-to-date equipment, well-maintained areas are key to the success of these programs and, as well as the teacher. Your point, Mr. Gill, about Mr. Brian Lewis there is well-taken, you know, you can just see that bubbling out of him, the enthusiasm for it, but a well-maintained classroom and everything helps that attitude a lot, so I just wanted to reinforce that.
Thank you.
And, and once again, I, I, it was great, Mr. Gill, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to get to talk about the programs.
And I know, I think we all appreciate the people that gave their time to be.
Sure do.
Thank you.
All righty. I think we're ready for...
Twelve.
But I think first Terry should tell us what animal he killed to get that fur on.
Ah.
Man, cocked pack.
I think I see Wildlife Agency pulling up right now. We heard a lot about collective bargaining this year, obviously, and there is a new law, and the update on the new collaborative conferencing law will be summarized by Ms. Barnes, and also Mr. Reed and Ms. McLeod are on the wings, ready to answer any questions that she can answer.
Thank you, Shigal. I believe Mr. Reed sent you a document last week with outline of the new law and a summary of the new law as well. But yesterday, Governor Haslam signed into law what is called the Professional Educators' Collaborative Conferencing Act of 2011, and this act replaces the Education Professional Negotiations Act of 1978. So, this Professional Educators' Collaborative Conferencing Act, that's a lot of, that's a mouthful right there, is known as an interest-based collaborative problem-solving process that brings persons together to try to come up with best strategies and intent for all employees. The, a training program is going to be provided to us and developed by the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, and this is due to be expected on January 1st, 2012. They will have a committee put together of school leaders, administrators, and professional employee organizations while they prepare this document for us. Two of the things that stand out at this point is that any and all bargaining conducted under the old EPNA will be suspended indefinitely on the effective date of the act, which was yesterday. And the other part... And the other part is that no collaborative conferencing shall be conducted by any local Board of Education until the training is implemented within the LEA after the January date that it's provided to us and everyone has been trained. Once we receive this information, which will be for us the year 2012, in October of that year, any professional organization can submit a request in writing for a local board to conduct collaborative conferencing. And that is done between October 1 and November 1 of that year. And again, the first year for us will be 2012. The board will then appoint a number of professional employees to conduct a confidential poll of all eligible employees. And from what I understand in the law, an eligible employee is someone who currently holds a teaching license issued by the state of Tennessee. There are some management personnel identified in that, and we can talk more about that if we need to. The professional, uh, excuse me, the confidential poll will ask two questions. Shall the professional employees of this LEA undertake collective conferencing with the Board of Education? And if the answer is yes, then the person will have to identify which organization they wish to represent them. I assume that they'll have to write in a response there, or it may be, and we're not real sure at this point how that process is going to work, but it looks like they'll write it in, or they'll mark unaffiliated if they choose to. And then once it's identified that there is, there are a majority of eligible employees who responded yes to that question, then the board will be required to participate and engage in collaborative conferencing. So you do the poll, and then as long as you get a majority of the vote that respond yes, then you move forward in that process. Once you do that, you identify members from each organization who is represented by at least a 15% base of the employees for that organization. And the board teams are put together to come together and go through this process as a group. The regs state that representatives' terms on this conferencing committee will be three years. And that again, each organization has the right to identify their own, their own representatives, just as the Board of Education will do. Representatives have to be appointed by December 1st of that year as we move forward in this process. And then there are certain things that can be discussed in col- collect, excuse me, I call it collaborative, collaborative conferencing. Salaries, grievance procedures, insurance, fringe benefits, working conditions, leave, and payroll deductions. Conferencing cannot include differentiated pay, expenditures of grants and awards, employee evaluations, staffing decisions, personnel decisions, and payroll deductions for political activities. So once your teams come together and you hold your collaborative conferencing, the intent is to reach a memorandum of understanding that will be prepared and presented to the Board of Education. And then it is up to the board to reach agreement and approve this document. Now, questions?
How many, uh, professional organizations are there out there that might represent?
We had that discussion. I currently only know of two. I know of REA, TEA, NEA, which is one group, and the PET organization. I'm not familiar with any others. But again, you can be unaffiliated in this group as long as you have that 15% recognized group.
Aaron?
You highlighted a handful of things that were specifically excluded. You can't talk about these things right, what were those again?
That you cannot discuss?
Yes.
Differentiated pay, expenditures of grants and awards, employee evaluations, staffing decisions, personnel decisions, and payroll deductions for political activities.
Any insight as to why those would be specifically excluded?
I, I really don't know. Mr. Reed, Ms. McLeod, no?
I mean, that was the whole argument, the people who wanted to make this change said those were the areas that Boards of Education needed to have control over if we're to reform education.
So it's not that we can't talk about them, we just don't talk about them in collaborative?
Right. In other words, boards, as my understanding is, boards get to make the decisions on those, there's no-
So we can take those issues and make a-
Right.
A decision about them without any collaborative input at all?
My understanding is if we want to do differentiated pay, we can do differentiated pay. Or we can make whatever rules we want about placement of teachers and so on.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that clearly.
What do we do for the next two years?
Well, as, as of this law, because it was signed yesterday, we actually just ceased negotiations.
Right.
Our contract is on the third year of, of its term, and it ends June 30th of this year. So from June 30th of this year until this new process opens up in October of 2012, we will have no contract. We'll just follow state law and board policy.
And there is law that, that will drive a lot of those decisions, you know, with work day, the, uh, pupil ratio, uh, I mean, the big things we'll be dealing with now will be salary until there's a new contract, salary and benefits, as you said.
There, and the, the law actually says that there are some things that don't need to be discussed because they are state law, such as duty-free lunch, planning time, number of students in classrooms. Those things don't need to be included because state law handles that.
We really don't anticipate that the working conditions of our teachers are going to deteriorate in any way because of this.
That is correct.
I mean, things are going to go along as they have been.
You know, right now there are proposals to get a, you know, to find a 1.6% raise pursuant to the governors. Also that 1.4%, uh, hopefully bonus from, uh, I always forget what that's called. But, so hopefully there'll be a 3% raise that the board initiated for next year. Yes, this Paul, uh, let me, let me try to remember what it was I was gonna ask you, I don't know.
Aaron?
Would it be accurate that grievance procedures are not statute, that they are by negotiation?
That is correct.
And so as of June 30th, would that be a specific element that would necessarily potentially need some board action in order to have something in place following June 30th?
We already have procedures in place for complaints, and we have policy that dictates, uh, harassment and discrimination. So we have things covered in that respect.
Isn't an element of that, though, REA representation along the way? And would REA still have its same standing in that grievance procedure?
I think any teacher could be represented by their organization if they choose to, should something occur and, and an incident have to be investigated or, uh, discussed with an employee. But again, we have policies and procedures that allow us to do that now outside of the grievance procedure. Did I answer that adequately?
Tim?
Your role and, and the role of the, the board's team, do you see that changing at all? The structure of the, of, of that group, who will, who will represent?
The board will appoint that team, and it will certainly expand. It's going to be up between seven and 11 representatives from the board and seven and 11 from these respective groups. So we know that, that the role will expand. And, uh, the, the, the law actually gives you a listing of people, but they call it management personnel. So it could include administrators, central office staff, it could include board members.
Probably should include all of them.
You know, this is so new right now, we're trying to, we're gonna, I think we'll see a lot of information filtered down, a lot of, um, clarification as people come to understand this and talk about it. So we'll, we'll hear more information about that and who might be on these teams.
Okay, other, other discussion? Well, thanks for summarizing, it's a pretty complicated piece of legislation and a lot of ramifications that we probably, no one's thought about yet. But as Paula said, we really don't do anything till 2012, right? I mean, fairly late in the year, so. Tim?
May, may I just state, you know, for the record, when, when teachers did respond concern about this that took place? My response back, and I'll just speak for myself, was that my goal will be to continue to do the best we can for teachers because they're the, they're the most vital people we have. So I hope that, I hope that this is not seen as a victory against something like that. I, I, I hope that they can recognize that it would be my intention, I think it's the intention of the board, that it be seen. But, uh, to continue without that, without that formal thing in place, to continue to do what we think is the right thing for the kids of our county. And that is to make sure that we have the best teachers and that there is, well, they can be. That's, that's what I hope occurs and, and, uh, those concerns, I hope in time can go away and they'll recognize that, that we will continue to do that in spite of not having a negotiation process.
I think that's the attitude of every board member and every administrator down here throughout the whole process. So I appreciate you reiterating that. And we, we certainly do want the teachers to get that message. Anything else on that? Okay, 13.
Parent Academy, we've been doing some research, actually had a couple committee meetings on creating a, a, a parent academy. And, uh, I think it has a lot of potential with respect to bringing parents into, uh, you know, into the fold here and to educate them on how they can help us and help their child become better learners. And James is going to give a quick update on where we are with respect to that and where we hope to go.
I'm sure that most of you have, uh, been to some sort of school board association conference, you know, have a variety of sessions to choose from. Uh, what the committee has discussed, and Mr. Gill, you know, we're, we're still in the planning stages, but, um, doing something similar like that in the fall for parents on a Saturday and have a variety of workshops and sessions that parents can choose from that will be geared towards, some of them will be geared towards specific grade levels and some will be universal in nature. Uh, we're also looking at doing something similar, but on a smaller scale, possibly in the spring, maybe on a weeknight. Uh, we're still working out the details on that. Uh, but for example, um, transition, transition workshops for, for parents when their kids are transitioning from elementary to middle school, what to expect, middle school to high school, uh, post-secondary, so, uh, preparing for scholarships, what college is going to be like, uh, even has some things about, you know, watching them out for credit cards, things like that. How to read a report card, a standards-based report card, like the K through two report cards that, you know, that can be kind of intimidated the parents sometimes. Uh, how to possibly to discipline or work with a difficult child at home where you can get resources to help with those sorts of things. You, you start seeing that in middle school more. Those types of workshops, we, we plan to survey parents, uh, later this summer and give them a, a kind of a menu of, of options for work sessions and let them choose the ones that they'd be most interested in and then, and then gear the conference towards that, their, their, their preferences. That's pretty much all we have at this point.
Let me expand on, what we think we'll do, and again, it's early on. But hopefully this will take three sites, for example, maybe Blackman High, Segal High, and then Smurda Oliver High. That way we've kind of covered all areas. Do an interest survey, like you said, to solicit ideas from parents on what they'd be beneficial. Maybe give them some guidelines and let say, you know, would you like to take this, or would you be interested in this? And then let teachers do some proposals for teaching, uh, that work session. And it may be from nine to one on a Saturday, maybe a 40 or 35-minute session. There may be four sessions available and the parents could rotate from one to the other and basically choose what they think would help them as parents become, take more, uh, ownership in their child's education. So, uh, and we think we'll probably provide some food, that might, everybody says food gets folks there. So we'll probably do that. But I think there'll be, I think we were all excited about the potential here.
Mr. Gill came up with this idea and asked us to get in touch with Metro Nashville. They, they do something that's similar, uh, they call it the Parent University. Uh, and so we got in touch with them and have borrowed some of their ideas. They've been very helpful on, on how long, they've, they've been doing theirs for about three years now. And it's growing in Nashville, that they're obviously dealing with a different, uh, demographic to some extent than we are. So, and a larger, uh, area that they actually provide transportation routes, which we think by having it at three different locations simultaneously, we won't necessarily have to do that. Food, like Mr. Gill said, typically attracts people, so food's one thing we're looking at. And then we've also discussed possibly childcare, but, you know, there's a lot of cost to look at as well, so. We're excited about it, that state is really pushing parent involvement. Uh, way, when I say parent involvement, I don't mean necessarily parents coming in and volunteering in the schools, but finding ways for parents to get involved in their child's academics. And we think that this would go a long way to helping that, so they, they feel more confident in reinforcing things at home, so.
Wayne?
Have you been able to use School Messenger along, or is that a, a tool you could use in this program?
School Messenger would be probably what we would use to survey the parents, uh, it has a survey function, so that-
As far as, I don't know, giving information out, trying to draw me, and I just, I don't know how extensive the message can be, so, you know, but I, I just wanted to-
I mean, the, the, uh, the potential for School Messenger is, is pretty much limitless. Uh, you know, we're learning every year different ways to use it. And we also have to be careful about not overusing it because then it becomes like junk mail, basically, and parents stop listening or start hanging up the phone. So, you know, we try to be a little choosy on what we send out, but, you know, like I said, we can, we can send out pretty much anything.
When do you anticipate this being launched? Would it be this fall?
Yes, yes.
I think it's a great, it's a great idea, you know, it's one thing we constantly talk about here at the board is how parents sometimes are not maximizing, you know, the way they fulfill their responsibilities. So if we can help them.
Well, you know, I, I would say that most every parent cares about their child and, and the future of their children, but they just don't know necessarily how to get involved and how to help and, you know, or they're, they've had bad experiences in schools when they were kids, and so they're intimidated by school buildings. These sorts of things kind of help break down some of those barriers, so I think it's a great idea.
What are some examples of where parents are participating now effectively, uh, in, in the school day or, or something like that? Are we talking about just activities that, that are supporting, uh, what we're doing, you know, from the home? Or are there places where parents are effectively serving now?
Uh, the schools have a number of organizations that have parents involved in them. There are school improvement teams, most schools have a PTO of some sort. Uh, you know, there are a lot of booster clubs, those sorts of things. Your Title I schools, they're required to spend a certain portion of their budget every year on parent involvement activities. They have parent nights, we have some schools that actually have classes for parents to teach English, things like that. Uh, we have a district-wide parent advisory council that Mr. Gill works with every semester. So there are a number of areas. But there are really, like I said earlier, there are two types of parent involvement that sometimes they get confused. One is you think of parent involvement about, you know, parents coming to the school and volunteering, you know, in the office or in the copy room or something like that. What we're really focusing on, what the research says helps with student achievement, is parent involvement in the sense of parents reinforcing academics at home, making sure children are doing their homework, looking at agendas, those sorts of things, understanding how to read a report card or a progress report. And that's what we're gearing this towards, is ways to help them to address their children's academics.
Thank you, James. Before we do general discussion, I think we have a, an announcement.
Uh, each of you should have a copy of a, uh, sheet, this number 14, executive committee approval and, uh, policy that we drafted not too long ago, executive committee, Dr. Burns and I approved on June 2nd, 2011. Employment of Perry Lyons to the position of Special Ed Assistant at Oakland High School. Mr. Lyons' brother Pierre Lyons has also employed Oakland High School. This is in accordance with Raptor County Board Policy 1.108, neptunism. There won't be any supervisory role by his brother and, uh, Dr. Burns and I both agree with Mrs. Furlock to allow that employment.
Okay, general discussion. Hearing none, we are adjourned.